Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 5:30 PM on Monday, October 2nd, 2017, at Friendswood City Hall Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, regarding the items of business according to the agenda list below. Call the meeting to order. Invocation by Pastor Mike Ross with Friendswood Church of Christ, and if you'll stay standing, we'll do the pledge of allegiance for the United States and Texas.
Holy God, we ask your blessings on this gathering this evening, and we thank you for the blessings of your presence and your power in our lives. We thank you, Father, for our counsel, for our elected officials, and for servants in our community. We pray for the blessings as they lead us, and we pray, Lord, that as we journey together, that neighbors and volunteers will continue this spirit of serving that is a rich heritage in Friendswood. We pray your blessings also, Father, of protection and strength and fortitude with our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, and responders. For these servants who step up and help out, may we, as neighbors, stand shoulder to shoulder with them. May you bless us, Father, with our journey together. May we do so in ways that make a difference. May partnerships of support be helpful, and we pray, Father, for always this gift of service to continue. We pray, Lord, for not only a spirit of cooperation, but a spirit of integrity, and we ask these blessings and we offer our thanks to you, and continue to seek your help. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to be the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas way, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item four, communication from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. Council may refer this item to the city manager, or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to us? Melinda? Is there anybody that is here to speak to us? Seeing none, we'll move on. Work session, A, capital projects update. Patrick?
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel? Almost, almost. I'll be brief.
Hey, I see you don't have a sling. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Somewhat moving. So, for those of you at home, every month I go through a capital projects update. At this point, we're getting a lot smaller on our capital project updates, so I'll be fairly brief as we go through this. The projects that I'll be talking about, the first one is our street bond project. Counsel, you may recall, I talked if all the stars aligned, we may have an item on the agenda for acceptance. Stars didn't quite align. However, we have completed pouring all the concrete out there. They were pouring the curbs today. They have a few pallets of grass out there, so once the grading's finished, they'll be putting grass on there, breaking some forms, and in the next couple of weeks, we'll be opening that, and then have an item on November's agenda for acceptance. This is a picture from last month. This is at FM 2351. This is from earlier this morning. This is at Dawn and Woodlawn, and this is them pouring the curbs, starting in that portion, working their way towards FM 2351. Next proj-- sorry, I may have gone a little bit too quick.
Keep going.
Any questions? Okay. So, our next one is our Old City Park. You may recall, we've been working on the design on this, and this is also in conjunction with a preliminary design that we have. We are pretty much done with the plans for the concrete portion. Just wanted to show it to y'all and make sure we're still in agreement, that we have a drive coming off of Marywood leading in. This would allow for parking for the proposed dog park. Coming off of Briar Meadow, coming in here, allow for parking for the pavilion. There's a walking trail that would connect to the existing walking trail that comes across the bridge, Stevenson Park Bridge, and then would connect around the Old City, Old City, around the dog park.
Can that park be used now? Is the fence up? That chain link fence that's up there, is that kind of yes, no? I just want the public to know whether they can use it.
I don't know that answer one way or the other. I know Michael Boyett, he may be able to answer that question. So, those of you at home, the fence is still up, so. All right. Next, Lake Friendswood Park. Our portion is pretty much done. The contractor has not started back on working on the building. One of the things you'll notice in this picture, although it's kind of hard to see, the water level is about right here. We have a pump that's been pumping water out of the lake for the past couple of days, and over the weekend, it's moving about an inch a day, with the intent to get it closer to pre-storm level in the lake. If you were to go out there to the fishing docks, typically, when we had the grand opening, you walked down. Currently, you walk up, so, once it's at least level or going down, then everything else will kind of work its way out. And right now, it's still a bit wet for the contractor to get in there and start doing what he needs to do. I would imagine by the end of next week, it should be dry enough where he should be back to working. The pavilion itself would be in this area right here. The steel portions for the pavilion are already on site. That's a look at the pump as it drops in here, with the discharge hose going into the ditch on the backside of it. Our text dot items, the FM 28 Whittaker Drive traffic signal, spoke with them today. The design plans are complete, and they are looking at doing the bidding. Originally, it was November, December. I'm getting confirmation on that now. I don't have that as I'm talking on whether or not they're bidding it next month, but it should be in that timeframe. The FM 518 in Dunbar traffic signal, the traffic study is not back yet, although it should have been back a couple of months ago, but we're not anticipating that it's going to have enough traffic coming off of there to warrant a signal. The third item is the FM 518 in Shadwell Left Turn Striping. That portion is in design now. Previously, it wasn't in design. It is in design. The remaining items are more of annual budget-type items, and I've sent an email to the district engineer trying to find out, are those still, did they make it in this year's budget? And if so, what kind of timeframe? I do know that text dot, a lot of their crews, both on the Harris County side and on the Galveston County side, they have become debris management pickup, so they are working on that for helping both our community, other communities affected in Galveston County and in Harris County. On the city items, last month, the Mandel Bridge portion was approved. We're working with Gulf Coast on that portion. There's some utility work that needs to get done before they actually start tearing everything out, so we're working with them on that. The 2017 street maintenance project was also another one that was approved last month. We had the pre-con this morning. We anticipate doing a code red to the citizens around San Miguel and San Joaquin to let them know that the project's coming, with the contractor starting on next Monday. That's kind of where I'm at. If y'all have any other questions, feel free to try and answer.
Thank you, Patrick. EMS, emergency medical services discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we have this item on the agenda. Let me back up and first say that we recognize the importance of volunteers throughout the city. It's one of our foundations, and we recognize the importance of the volunteer fire department, as well as all of the volunteers across the city, the boards, the committees, the commissions, you folks that sit up front are volunteers, and we thank you for your service. After Hurricane Harvey came through, you'll recall last month that I asked if you would have this discussion that would center on whether you wanted us to continue down the path of issuing an RFP for EMS services. You'll recall that we had a lot of help in volunteers of all shapes and sizes in different states, and were referenced as far as the Armadas or the Navies or what have you. But one thing that was emphasized was the difficulty of our EMS services, in that many of those folks are full-time paid professionals elsewhere, and largely, well, not largely, if you have, if you're a paid employee and can get to where you serve, then that's where you go. They own your services, so to speak. If you can't get there, we have some that still volunteer here if they're able to get to our place of service. So, it emphasized the need to just look at that, and I wanted y'all to think it over, and if you're ready to go ahead with the RFP, we're fine to continue down that path, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to reconsider that if you're interested in doing so. With that--
Thank you, Roger. Any discussion on that?
Roger, I thought we told you a couple of months ago to do the RFP.
You did, and as I explained last month, we had several meetings internally and with volunteers. I delayed it at that point in time because of some internal discussion. We were still working on it, so the fact that it didn't go out, blame me if you're disappointed in that. That is totally on me.
Well, I think it's a tool the council needs. It's just another tool we need to make a good decision, and I certainly hope we wouldn't go outside the city for ambulance service, but the people of our EMS, and if, I just think we need to quit kicking the can down the road. I just think we need to try to come up with a solution to the problem.
And if that's the consensus of council, we are fine moving that RFP forward. Again, I just wanted to have you consider whether you wanted to look externally or have us look at other options to bring those inside.
And the reason, and I agree with Jim Hill, that, you know, we would really like to see the number that an RFP would produce, so that we know what the bogey is. You know, we know that I'm 100% certain that our volunteers will be able to come in and work. It'll be less expensive than going out externally, I think, but I agree that we kind of owe it to the citizens to be able to tell them that, you know, look them straight in the face and say, hey, you know, so-and-so is planning to charge us $3 million. I don't know. Pick a number. Our current EMS is doing it for X number less, so if there's another way that we can derive that information, you know, maybe we should explore that, but, you know, the straight-ahead way to do it, of course, like we discussed, is, hey, put it out there, let people bid on it, and tell us what they would charge us to do it, and then we'll know. And I guess that's where I am, but, like I said, if there's another way, if anybody has an idea on another way we can get that number, a good number for what those services would cost the city if we went externally, let them come forward and tell us, because I don't know another way.
Any other comments?
No, sir. Appreciate the--
Councilmember Rocky. Councilmember Gustafson.
My understanding, if I remember last month correctly, we kind of decided not to go down the path of the RFP, and perhaps I'm remembering incorrectly, because what we were preparing to do was send something out that mimicked what was going to be a real buying inquiry, and that wasn't what we were after. What we asked for was a budgetary proposal from somebody, but ultimately, I thought what we decided was that we would make best use of what information that we could call from the benchmark cities that we used, and that's where we were going to get our number from, not send out an RFP. Again, I'm not saying I'm right, because I've slept since then, and I didn't review the tape tonight before I came in here, because I didn't realize we were going to discuss sending the RFP back out, but that was my recollection. And I, if we get too far down this road with sending out an RFP, I'd be just caution everybody, don't confuse price and cost. They're two different things, and I've said this before, I've not had anybody ever send me a note or contact me personally to let me know about a problem with our EMS service, ever. All sorts of other things, but never that. The issue is, we're going to run into a little crisis regarding paying for it, and right now, we're letting thousands, tens of thousands of dollars every month slip right through our fingers, because for whatever reason, we won't initiate the process of charging for ambulance service. And whatever the solution's going to be, that's going to be part of it, and I don't understand for the life of me, but we just don't start doing that now, in parallel with whatever else we're going to come up with, be it a paid service or whatever. But I'd like to see us moving down the road, beginning to charge. After all, everybody's supposed to have insurance with the current federal mandate, so everybody should have an insurance company that's willing to, that is set up to pay for this ambulance service. All we're doing is lining the pockets of Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and other insurance companies by not doing it. Anyway, that was my recollection, and that's what I'd like to see done.
Councilman Rocky.
I'm with Jim and Mike. I think we just get it out, and let's find out what the number is. It's, I don't recall the discussion last week, and I honestly don't remember what my own opinion was, but I just think, let's get it going. It was the step, it was a piece of information. We all know that it's a, it's a, it's a data point and not a decision. Let's just go get the number.
Councilmember Branson. I got it right?
You did, thank you. I would just like to reiterate what I've said from the very beginning. If this is the mechanism for us to use to price this service, and we're not serious about going out for an RFP, I know there's already been a very large investment made by city and staff to pull this together, but if we go out with this information, then there's going to be costs incurred by those who bid on this, and I think if we are not genuine in our interests, then I think that we are being disingenuous by moving forward with this, and I would like to, as Councilman Foreman brought up, if there are other ways to secure a good number, I would like to visit those ideas prior to issuing an RFP.
Councilman Scott, any comment? I don't think we have clear direction yet, do we?
I agree that we have to get a number, so if that means going out for, sending out an RFP, we have to get the number. We owe it to the taxpayers to get the number, right? We can't just arbitrarily, you know, jump into the pool based on, you know, not gathering all the information possible that we can. Now, I think that there could be a better way or a different way to go about finding what other people are being charged for services, but if that's not the case, then we have to send out the RFP. That's my opinion.
Now, you have direction?
Just, I believe so. Just as a reminder, we did provide information regarding what other cities are doing some months in the past with general budgetary numbers, so we understand.
Yeah, and then after that came the RFP discussion. All right, we'll move on to C, Hurricane Harvey update.
Well, Murad makes his way across the building. Part of my city manager's report is a little bit of an update, so if you would, Mr. Mayor, let me make a few comments before he begins. Just want to commend, as I said earlier, volunteers are the backbone of this city. First Baptist has continued to operate their donation center. That has closed. However, that building is now turned into a FEMA disaster recovery center, so wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. It's open Monday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Sundays from noon to 5:00 PM. That is where folks need to go that have been affected, who haven't talked personally with a FEMA representative, to get the information that's specific to them. Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints continues to operate their call center for those who are looking for help or offering to help. Calvary Houston, again, serves thousands of meals and is operating a food pantry. Mary Queen Catholic Church's food pantry has distributed hundreds of, food to hundreds of families, and they also have helped with a legal association who's provided some legal advice. The two issues that are most on people's minds, based on the calls that we continue to get, are buyout programs, and we'll have an item related to that this evening, and storm debris. Storm debris operations have moved slower than any of us would have liked or expected, but none of us expected storms to cover the Gulf Coast, stretching from Corpus Christi to Key West. However, the good news is, our contractor has been diligently working to secure more equipment. The last four days, we've averaged having 38 trucks in operation across the city, and the removal rate has averaged 5,100 cubic yards a day, so that's a very significant increase over what it had been prior to that. In addition, we've requested help from the state through text dot, and we have nine trucks that begin working today, that are highway department trucks, and Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District has also offered and began working with two of their trucks today, so we appreciate all of that support. The daily reports we put out have a chart that is included in it that shows the original estimate plus the accumulation or the cumulative number of debris that's been removed. That chart, that original estimate, was based on national averages of 40 cubic yards per homestead. In a situation like this, our debris is going to be much greater than that, so if you're paying attention to that chart and seeing it's approaching nearly 50%, you're going to see that accomplishment piece, if you will, drop back, because that total estimate from 150,000 cubic yards will be bumped up to $250,000 here shortly, 50,000 cubic Again, we know that progress has been slow. We know that people's patience has worn thin, and we just ask them to try to hang in there and continue to be as patient as possible. We're going to get it done. I wanted to recognize a couple of other departments. In our permits area, they've issued over 800 flood repair permits, continue to work contractors and homeowners with those permits, and have continued to do inspections, not only on those repairs, but on new construction, so we have done our best not to slow others down. We have brought in a couple of former employees who thought they had retired from us, and unfortunately for them, or fortunately for us, we still had their phone number, and we want to thank them for being willing to come back, and they've been working hard in their retirement. The Friendswood Library, you don't think about them in debris recovery or disaster situations, but they have been helping people with disaster-related research in the library. Also have been opening the doors for community organizations that have been displaced and using their meeting space. Wanted to recognize the group that held the benefit concert a week ago, last Saturday. It was a great event. Want to publicly thank Function, which is the band that offered their services, and they did a fantastic job. Of course, Friendswood's own Eric Harding is the individual who played the piano in his flooded house, played a couple of songs, and just was amazing. Friendswood Downtown and Friendswood Association sold Friendswood Strong t-shirts and sold those out very quickly, and those proceeds went to the Friendswood Rotary Club Charitable Foundation. That group has raised right at $90,000 to date and given away all of it, but a little bit, and they already have commitments for that amount, so they're in excess of over $80,000 out the door and already have applications and pending donations to others that will take the balance. So, if any want to donate, that is absolutely a great place to do it. It's the Friendswood Rotary Club Charitable Foundation, and they're getting money directly to those who've been impacted. And lastly, hitting my comments on a very positive note, Marathon Petroleum Corporation donated $75,000 to assist the city's recovery from Hurricane Harvey. They are donating $1 million across the region, and that is the designation for the city of Friendswood, so we received that recently. Want to recognize them. So, thank you for that time, and Murad, other thoughts or comments?
Do you know the address of the building? I know it's a catticorder from McDonald's where people can see the FEMA office. I'm sure they'll have signage, but--
It's the old Kingdom Kids--
King's Kids.
--daycare, King's Kids Daycare Center.
201--
209, sorry, South Friendswood Drive.
209, South Friendswood Drive, but right in front or right across the street from McDonald's, I guess, virtually.
Roger had mentioned another big component of the storm was the buyout program, and I'll go into a little bit more detail later on this evening when we have the discussion on the Texas Water Development Board item. One thing that has come up since Hurricane Harvey is the difference between effective flood maps and what's physically insurance policies are being written on. You may recall, prior to 2001 and Tropical Storm Allison, the city was under the 1999 effective maps. It delineated floodways, flood-prone properties throughout the city of Friendswood and this region of Houston. After Tropical Storm Allison, Harris County commissioned and a number of entities partnered with the county and adopted what's known as TSARP maps, new floodplain maps based upon the impacts of Tropical Storm Allison. Despite that effort and the adoption of those maps by this city council, well, your predecessors, FEMA had continued to issue insurance policies, as well as make recommendations on whether or not to have insurance based off the 1999 maps, despite having better data available. We were required to, once adopting those maps, however, issue building permits and make flood zone determinations based on the 2007 TSARP maps, not what the effective maps are. As you can imagine, that's put us in a little bit of a predicament, namely, any flood-prone property, if it sustains substantial damage, damage exceeding 50% of the value of that building itself, when it goes to rebuild or repair the damage, it would have to comply with current flood zone regulations, which in a number of cases may mean elevating the finished floor. That becomes problematic when the 2007 maps have a different finished floor than the 1999 maps. So, later on, assuming I have a consensus of council, I will bring an item to y'all, most likely within a November council meeting, to retract the 2007 maps and stick with the effective maps that FEMA had been issuing flood insurance policies-- policies based off of. I recommend doing that for two reasons. One, I don't want to keep any of our homeowners that aren't going to be able to elevate their property out of their homes. Um, it's, they're in an unfair situation just being pit between the city and what FEMA directed them to do a number of years ago. Um, two, the flood insurance premiums are, that they would pay based off the ninety-nine maps are more, uh, affordable than what they would be charged otherwise on that two thousand and seven map. We will still present the best available data to those homeowners and encourage them, if there's a new house being built, hey, I know what the maps say in nineteen ninety-nine, but I would encourage you to build to this just for your own benefit. Um, but I don't recommend holding up folks from being able to rebuild and move on with their lives. So, uh, I just wanted to have that discussion with you early on, uh, so that you're aware of it, and if you have any questions, by all means, ask me now, um, and then I can discuss buyouts later on this evening.
Would it have any effect on buyouts?
Uh, it would not have. Those, those two issues are separate.
Okay.
They're related only in the sense that, uh, properties were flooded, and so there, there's some correlation there, but it would not have any effect on future buyout applications.
And we, just so the public knows, we know that the two seven, two thousand and seven FEMA, or maps, houses that were okay in that, uh, situation where they're, they were built to the two thousand, still, some of them got two and three foot of water.
Correct, and that, that just speaks to the magnitude of the storm.
Yeah.
We experienced a storm that, uh, in a lot of ways exceeded, um, the hundred-year event, uh, and in some cases exceeded the five-hundred-year event. We had fifty-plus inches of rain in a span of four days. There are parts of Texas that don't see that in three years.
Councilmember Gustafson?
Do we have the option of perhaps waiving that for some period of time, a year or so, so people that can rebuild their homes, that want to rebuild can, and then go back to what we've got now?
I would recommend retracting it, and if you want to reconsider adopting new maps, um, in, in a later date, then by all means, yes, but...
Give it a year later or something, and then bring it back and do it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Anybody else? Councilmember Rocky, and then Councilmember Hill?
Mo, I've been asked by several people, two things. One is, is there an opportunity for people to arrange to have their own debris picked up and taken somewhere? And the second is, can, can there be central spots on a street, like a dumpster or something, put so that people could take their trash down to there and then it would get hauled off? Having said that, and I do want you to answer it so people can hear it, I had an experience, um, a week or so ago, a friend of my son's was, um, uh, his house got flooded, and we went down and visited him, and he lives in Poly Ranch, and they have a big pile of debris in front of their driveway. And while we were standing there talking, a huge cottonmouth snake slithered out of the pile, calmly slithered across the driveway and went to the neighbor's pile. That is why I don't think it's a really bad idea to pick up your own debris at this point in time. But nonetheless, I do want to, people have asked, and I'd like you to, you know, state an opinion on that.
Sure, and I would encourage Brian, if he wants to interrupt at any time, to feel free to do so. Um, with respect to your first question, if folks would like to contract privately to have the debris removed by their contractor, by whomever they please, they're welcome to do so. However, uh, it's not something that the city would reimburse, uh, namely because there's a set process that must be followed based on our contracts as well as FEMA guidelines in order to ensure full reimbursement of the debris that's picked up. A number of homeowners have, uh, paid to have contractors pick up the debris, and, uh, majority of the time, that's covered under their flood insurance policy. So if that's something that you're interested in doing and you have flood insurance, by all means, take a look at it. You may have already paid for that service in your premium. Uh, with respect to the second question about staging dumpsters, a variety of places throughout town, uh, the concern and limitation there is everything that goes into that dumpster would have to be monitored. Otherwise, it would invalidate any reimbursement applications to the, to the feds, as well as potentially invalidate that, that dumpster itself, that we wouldn't be able to dispose of it at the landfill because it were contaminated with non-construction and demolition material.
Oh, no, the maps.
Just how nice I look tonight? Oh, maps, okay.
Yeah, I've been going to the Clear Creek Steering Committees, Committee Meetings for twelve years, and the committee has actually paid for some engineering on remapping the, uh, Clear Creek watershed. Uh, Mo, you may remember, it's two or three years ago.
Yes, sir.
We went to Leech City.
Yes, sir.
They, they had all the, they had it, they were down to public comments, and my only thing is, is it's very confusing for mortgage companies, mortgage companies use the current adopted map. Insurance company used the proposed map. And that's why a lot of people did not have flood insurance. Had the new map, map been in effect, they would have been required, if they refinanced or anything else, to have flood insurance. So, and I don't know, I have no reason to believe FEMA will adopt the new map. Like you say, they're still working on data from the nineties, and there's been a lot of things happen around here since then.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, I don't know, I don't know how you can get them to, unless you call, uh, U.S. Senators or something. I don't, I don't know how you get them to, to get it done.
From staff's perspective, my recommendation is to use the maps that FEMA utilizes as their effective maps and simply show the additional maps or that data as, uh, best available data, and encourage folks to mitigate or protect themselves as best as possible.
I think legally, that's the only map you can follow, because the other one's more or less a proposed map.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mo.
Thank you.
Move on to item six. Executive, close the executive session. Executive concert, conference room adjacent to council chambers. Communication from the public regarding executive session topics. Council may convene in the executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to five-five-one dot oh seven-two. Deliberations about real property. Yeah? We can hold off on that one if you guys want to suspend the rules and move stuff up. City managers' report?
I will take just a minute because most of it was related to Harvey, uh, Hurricane Harvey, but I did want to announce the, uh, fifteenth annual broker developer, developer event will occur this, uh, October twenty-sixth at Timber Creek Golf Club. Uh, so if you're interested in playing golf in the Chamber Tournament or hearing about, uh, development opportunities in the city of Friendswood, be sure and look into that in attending if possible. And lastly, we received word from the volunteer fire department that they plan to have the Kenneth Camp Fire Station dedication, uh, Saturday, October fourteenth at one P.M. So folks that are able to attend, if you would, let us know so we know who, who is able, or whose schedule permits that.
I've asked Councilman Rocky to attend for me. I'll be at a, I hate to say this, forty-year high school reunion.
We can move up the consent agenda? Seventeen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And I do see Nancy in the audience. We could do that, too. Yeah? All right, let's, let's move up item ten as well, and then we'll do communication. Uh, and a report from Senior Citizens Advisory Committee Chairman Nancy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm Nancy Mostra Francesco, Chairman of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. I'm here to report on our activities for this year. We have a variety of activities to appeal to our diverse and active seniors. Daily attendance this year has been between eighty and one hundred people. Bimonthly newsletters and calendars are distributed by email, and printed copies are available at the center and the Friendswood Library. Our three weekly exercise programs are still very popular, with thirty-five to forty-five participants in each class. These are our largest regular classes. Good luck finding a parking place on those days. We also offer Tai Chi, yoga, chair yoga, Zumba Gold, and a fitness room. We recently added balloon tennis, which promises to be as exciting as the chair volleyball we added last year. Line dancing, tap dancing, and clogging are also popular. Our dancers share their talent at shows for our center as well as for area nursing and assisted living homes. We continue to learn and improve our skills with classes for painting, Spanish, and guitar. Our crochet class makes hats and lap blankets for area hospitals. Two new classes are photography and the recorder, a musical instrument, I had to ask. Twice yearly AARP Smart Driver courses are offered, and we have special classes in self-defense. We also have guest speakers on topics such as Medicare and veterans' benefits, Alzheimer's, hearing and communication problems, and avoiding scams, which particularly target the seniors. In addition to daily transportation to and from our building for those who don't drive, our bus is put to good use with monthly shopping and out-to-lunch or breakfast trips. It is also used for cultural and entertainment trips such as the Worthen Theater twice last year, Pasadena Opry seven times, Houston Astros games four times, Moody Gardens, Hemmy Hideout to see, to see an amazing collection of restored cars and memorabilia, Hawk Winery, as well as plays and musicals at local community theaters. We did that four times, including a performance by a certain councilman. We took tours of the Friendswood Police Department, the Houston Ship Channel, a guided tour of TGR exotics, that's exotic animals, very interesting, and the Houston Food Bank. Donations were collected when we went to the food bank. We also visited the Bicycle Museum, Health Museum, Rosenberg Library Museum, and the Buffalo Soldiers Museum. We still enjoy traveling, and thirty-five people went on a seven-day cruise to Key West and the Bahamas in March of this year. Our fifth seniors cruise is planned for January twelfth, twenty eighteen. It will be a five-night Western Caribbean cruise leaving Galveston on Royal Caribbean's Vision of the Seas to Puerto Costa Maya and Cozumel, Mexico. In addition, a second trip to Cachada was added this year due to popular demand. When we are not traveling, there are games such as bridge, bongo, dominoes, mahjong, puzzles, and Wii bowling tournaments. Bingo is played twice monthly, and we have a new card game that is very popular called Hand and Foot. At the request of the dedicated players, we've recently begun a monthly hand and foot tournament. There's also a monthly movie matinee, complete with popcorn, snacks, and lemonade. We have plenty of social activities, such as our watermelon bash and bingo, fall picnic, spring picnic, and Easter egg hunt. The Easter egg hunt was added this year and was a lot of fun. Holiday activity, activities included the Halloween Bash, Veterans Day Luncheon, Thanksgiving Potluck, the Christmas Train in Alvin, Breakfast with Santa, Valentine's Day Luncheon, Go Texas Luncheon, Cinco de Mayo Luncheon, Mother's Day Luncheon, and Donuts with Dad. Special events include our two annual fundraisers, the spaghetti luncheon and the barbecue lunch. These events help to support our activities, and we truly appreciate the community, community report, the community support we receive for these events. Our health fair had twenty-eight vendors providing health information and services. There was also a free health screening event. Our casino extravaganza is always popular and well-attended. The Christmas in September craft market had more vendors this year despite losing several at the last minute that were affected by flooding from Hurricane Harvey. All our classes are taught by volunteers, and we appreciate their contributions and dedication. We're always looking for people who are willing to share their talents with us. We also want to thank the many local businesses that sponsor or contribute to the success of our activities. The staff of the Senior Citizen Program, Jeanie Balderas, Senior Program Manager, Jamie Eubanks, Assistant Senior Program Manager, and Sal Lopez, aide, continues to do an outstanding job under the leadership of Michael Boyett, Recreation Superintendent. We are planning and looking forward to another active year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Councilmember Forman?
Thanks, Nancy. I, uh, I am the, uh, council liaison to the Senior Citizens Committee. I expected more of a chuckle from that because, uh, Jim Hill is just sitting two chairs down from me, but, 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 uh, I, I wanted to point out that we have, uh, we did a study earlier, we commissioned a study earlier this year on, uh, building a new activity center. Uh, I think officially, uh, this is called the Activity Center. Uh, a lot of us call it the Senior Center because, uh, most of the activities that go on at our Activity Center are, are for seniors, but, uh, they are busting at the seams, as you can tell from Nancy's report, there's a lot that goes on over there. Uh, our monthly meetings are, are during one of those exercise classes, so I'm always having a hard time finding a place to park when I go to the meetings, and, uh, we, we commissioned a study, the, the number was a little bit eye-watering on what it would take to, to build a new Activity Center for Friendswood, but it is coming. We, we're going to need it. Uh, just, just recently, during the flood, uh, the city had to use the Activity Center as a shelter, and that Activity Center does not have showers, it wasn't designed for that, it was in a library originally. We've gotten a lot of use out of it in this city over the years, but, uh, I just want to put a bug in, uh, my, my, uh, other council member's ears and mayor's ears and, and let everybody know that this is something that we're going to have to address sooner rather than later, so, uh, be looking for that. Uh, enough said, I guess.
Any other comments? Councilmember Branson?
I would just like to say thank you very much for letting us use that as a shelter. That was really awesome. Getting around town, we found out we had lots of little islands around Friendswood, but we had a hard time getting around, so really appreciate y'all opening that up, and I know some of your programming was delayed or canceled because of that, but just want to say thank you very much for that.
Uh, Jamie did an excellent job. She came and opened the center, and, uh, I know at least one committee member that helped, I don't, and a lot of other people, city, city employees came in and helped to, to deal with the people. There were, it's my understanding, there were eighty-two, there were a hundred people during that week that were sheltered after Harvey.
Well, counsel, I think that's about it. That we can move up? Oh. Comments from mayor and council? Councilmember Gustafson? Councilmember Scott?
Just, uh, real quickly, the, uh, Friendswood Mustang football team Friday defeated the Dickinson Gators, and that's probably the first time that's happened since, uh, I can remember, so have a really exciting football team and a good group of boys that are out there fighting. So, uh, they're away this week at Clear Falls. The following week is Clear Brook here at Friendswood. Uh, that will be Patriotic Day, and then the following week will be Clear Creek here in Friendswood, and that'll be homecoming. So if you don't have anything else to do, go out and watch some, uh, really good football.
Councilmember Forman? Councilmember Hill?
Uh, yeah, uh, the county is having a bond election in November, and, uh, they will give us back almost four million dollars of our tax dollars, and it's been, uh, the council is asking to build Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. That is enough to build at least, uh, two lanes, which will give us some relief of the traffic in Falcon Ridge Boulevard getting to the junior high. Uh, it will relieve some traffic at five-twenty-eight and five-eighteen, and it will save the school district time getting buses, uh, from Wentzong to the junior high. And as you saw during the storm, it would also pro, provide a dry emergency route on the south side of town since five-twenty-eight was impassable. But anyway, it's, uh, nice of the county to give us some of our money back. I wish they would have done more, but, uh, a free road is not something to, uh, not appreciate. Thank you.
Councilmember Branson?
I'd just like to continue on the Harvey relief effort. Um, I appreciate the job that Rotary has done, and the folks have been very generous in giving to the Rotary Foundation. There's also been another group that's been contributing to the Friendswood Education Foundation, and, uh, we had about eighty-six, uh, staff members who were affected by the flood, and they've, we've raised over eighty thousand dollars to give to those individuals... they've, we've raised over eighty thousand dollars to give to those individuals. So I'm really excited because if you take a look at what Rotary's done and what the Friendswood Education Foundation has done, that's a lot of help to a lot of folks in our community. And the Education Foundation's premise was that if the teachers were going to go into that classroom and teach those students, they needed to feel good about what was happening at their own homes. So that effort was really focused on staff, not necessarily that lived here in Friendswood, but staff that was flooded. So I just want to thank all those who contributed to that. I think both efforts were very much appreciated and there's so many folks here in our community that were affected, as you all know. So I just want to say thank you to those who not only supported the Rotary, but also the Education Foundation. Thanks.
Councilmember Rocky?
The Friendswood Historical Society will be having their annual Historween event, October twenty-eighth, Saturday, October twenty-eighth. If any of you guys up here would like to participate, I know Jim, Jim plans not to enter that cemetery any, not a moment before his time, but which hopefully is a long way off. But if any of you would like to, Carl's done in the past and others, if you would like to play a role, we have, we actually have plenty of interesting things for you to do and anybody out there as well, just let me know and I'll, I may be reaching out to some of you anyway. You want to do it? Oh, he's told me before. Anyway, anyway, there'll be more, there'll be a lot of information coming out and if not, if you're not participating, it's a really fun event. You get to learn a lot about the actual history of Friendswood, which is quite interesting and get to participate in some Halloween kind of events as well, so.
I just want to comment on how much this community has helped one another throughout this Hurricane Harvey and it still continues. We've had people from outside the city come in, but that has seemed like it's faded, but neighbor helping neighbor is still going on and I'm thankful to be in the city of Friendswood and thank you to all of you. We'll convene into executive session now. Jeff is here. Let's do it. Friendswood Area Swim Team Fast, President Jeff Thiel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow citizens, I'm Jeff Thiel. I'm the new president of the Friendswood Area Swim Team and I wanted to come here this evening and express our appreciation for all the support that the city provides to us and you probably don't even know how you do that, so I thought I'd tell you. First, a little bit about our team. We've been around for twenty-five or thirty years. A lot of the high school swimmers that compete have come out of our team and a lot of the teachers at the high school swam with Fast. I mean, I think we've been around for a long time. We're part of the Clear Creek Swim League, which has been here over fifty years, providing summer swim from Baytown all the way down to Texas City. So we use the pool at Stevenson Park. It is a wonderful pool, let me tell you that. It is pretty much suited exactly for what we do. We're a competitive swim team, but we're also recreational and it's our goal to give swimmers a great swim experience. We start with the young kids, six and under, we have age groups, six and under, eight and under, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen to eighteen. So the young kids come in, all they have to do is swim across the pool, they can join the team. And then swimming is a skill, you know, just like most other athletic things. The more you do it, the better you are. And so practices where the kids are swimming up and down the pool, learning all the strokes, making them better swimmers all the time. If you're a better swimmer, you know, you're a safer swimmer. And Texas is an area where there's a lot of water sports, so really having a good and solid swimming skill is essential here. Let me tell you a little bit about one of our swim meets. So on Saturday mornings, starting about six-thirty in the morning, depending on who we're swimming, if we're swimming a team like League City, which is another team, another big team, they have about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred swimmers. We have two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred swimmers, so you're talking five-hundred swimmers and the families that go with them, four or five-hundred. Starting about six-thirty, everybody starts assembling, pop up tents, start coming out and it's moms, dads, brothers, sisters, cousins, nieces, uncles, aunts, all together at a single athletic event where brothers and sisters can participate in the same event. So everybody starts getting set up, before seven, the teams warm up, eight o'clock. Somebody sings the National Anthem, usually it's some of the swimmers that are in the choir and then we're off with eighty events. So eighty events and some of them have five, six, seven heats, meaning individual races. Some of them have one or two, but over the course of eighty events, there's three-hundred probably races. And if you figure three-hundred times a minute apiece, that's five hours. So for five hours on a Saturday morning, you basically have a tailgate party or a picnic going on where instead of you're having sack races, the kids are swimming. And it's a great family event, you know, this is all about families. And so that's what we provide. The coaches for our team typically are high school swimmers who swam at Friendswood High School, so we provide summer jobs for them. We also train them as lifeguards, so that's another skill that they can use. And so that's what we do for five weeks out of the summer every year and Stevenson Park is such a great venue to have that at. We do our training there at Stevenson Park in the evenings, you know, a nice late May evening with the breeze blowing across, watching all the kids go back and forth across the pool. Really a great experience for the families, for the swimmers, and that's because you help us. You know, we couldn't do this without the support of, you know, the council, the city, the Parks Department, because that helps us keep our fees low. So early in the season, the water's cold, have to turn on the heater and we told you that we would help with the heater fees and so I brought you a check to cover our part of that. And in conclusion, I'd just like to say that I think we're one of the many volunteer organizations that make Friendswood kind of the great place it is to raise a family and it's great for us to provide this service. We want to keep doing that. We want to keep the continuity of the team going for the city of Friendswood and we really appreciate your help in achieving this goal. So thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do, Jeff. We're convened. Will we convene back from executive session? Communication from the public, to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item replaced on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. We're done. Did I say that fast enough? Really? Yeah. Ten B, annual report from Dwight Potter in the Friendswood Chamber of Commerce. All right. Come on in, the water's fine.
All right, Mr. Mayor, city council. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Well, why don't we stand up and introduce each other? You guys are going to have me introduce you.
All right. I'm Craig Hall with VARC Solutions.
Chris Greenoff with Roncar.
Benet Rowley, the Rotary Coffee.
Jerry Housekohl.
Half of the Friendswood Chamber Board. Well, I am Dwight Potter, Chairman of the Board and I'm not going to go over the whole written report that we had given you. I'm just going to highlight a few things that relate to the role of the chamber serving the city. We hold an annual state of the city luncheon every year for the mayor and the public is welcome to come to that. We host a Cinco de Mayo reception every year. We sponsor a safety awareness put on by the Friendswood Police Department. Hurricane awareness and preparation is held at the chamber office for the businesses. We publish demographics regarding Friendswood, the Friendswood area every year. Each year a directory is mailed to over ten thousand Friendswood residents as a courtesy and another four thousand are mailed to area businesses, newcomers and interested parties. We work directly with the mapmakers in editing, selling ads and distributing a current map for the Friendswood area. We provide a website link at www.friendswoodchamber.com. We also provide a very nice meeting room for various groups. In funding the chamber, we're grateful for the support the city gives us. The chamber's budget depends primarily on membership dues and other non-dues income such as raffles, tournaments, events with our program of work. The Friendswood Chamber is in charge of helping to assure a positive and nurturing environment for area businesses. Creating such an environment is a joint effort and we are fortunate to have many partners with the same vision. Carol Markantow, she's our Chamber President. She attends the County, the Galveston County Events, City Council, Emergency Management Meetings and sits on the Economic Development Committees. She is also a member of the Gulf Coast Chamber Executives, which promotes Friendswood through the state. Carol, would you please stand for admission? All right. And Lucy, Lucy's not here, but our Vice President Lucy Walts has attended Emergency Management Meetings. She attends the Fourth of July Meetings as a liaison for the chamber and ISD, Friendswood ISD Committees, as well as Friendswood, Friends of Downtown Friendswood. She's on the Board of Directors. As the chamber and the city of Friendswood grow, our chamber remains ready and willing to work in the partnership with the city of Friendswood, Friendswood ISD, the Clear Creek ISD and the many organizations that make Friendswood a place where businesses and family can thrive in a safe community. In conclusion, as you all know, the chamber building flooded. From the onset of Harvey, the staff protected the computers, the files and other important data. They worked diligently as salvage as much as they could with the help from the Board of Directors and the chamber members. And we do have flood insurance. We started tear out immediately and dry out very quickly and we're on our way to rebuilding. We should be finished up this month. Come in and see our new office in November. Through the kindness and generosity of Stanfield Properties located at three oh seven South Friendswood Drive, we relocated our offices there through their, like I said, their generosity and they provided us with furniture and phone lines so we could get back to work. Many thanks to Alan and Beth Stanfield. On behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff of the Chamber of Commerce, we applaud the city, the police, the EMS, the first responders for their diligent effort during the horrific time in Friendswood's history. Thank you and God bless.
Item twelve. Discussion and possible action regarding approving appointments, reappointments to the following boards and commissions. Keep Friendswood Beautiful. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation expenditure to remove certain utility poles and change aerial to buried cable along the west side of Friendswood Drive in the amount of seventy-one thousand, two seventy-one thirty. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. Fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding Texas Water Development Board flood mitigation grant. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, second. Mo, you want to explain this to us?
Yes, sir. About a week and a half ago, the city of Friendswood was notified that the Texas Water Development Board is administering a buyout grant from FEMA for the state of Texas and that the deadline to submit applications was this past Thursday. About Wednesday of last week, they notified us that the deadline was moved till tomorrow and then this evening, a few minutes ago, I got an email that said they're going to move it to next Tuesday. So I have a little bit more time to get an application together. Staff within the Community Development Department and Public Works have been working closely with Daniel Johnson of Daniel Scott Engineering to identify properties that would qualify for a buyout program. The grant works in a multitude of ways, but the higher priority projects are the properties that are classified as a severe repetitive loss, which means they've sustained flood damage four or more times with each incident in being in excess of twenty thousand dollars in repair cost and doesn't specify a minimum time period. If it qualifies as a severe repetitive loss and was damaged during this event, it qualifies for a hundred percent buyout from the federal government with dollars being administered through the Texas Water Development Board. If the next category of projects are what it's known as repetitive loss, it's been flooded three times at least, again, not over a specific time period, but has sustained major damage and each of those incidents were in excess of twenty thousand dollars. Staff has preliminarily put together a list of properties, about eighty-six of them in total. I apologize, let me back up. The second priority projects are to be funded with a ninety percent federal dollars and ten percent local match, which means the city, county or some agency at the local level would have to put up some dollars in order to make the grant work unless the homeowner were willing to take less than a hundred percent. We have compiled a list of approximately eighty-six properties that qualify for this. The list is not all-inclusive. As we're going through our insurance documents provided by the state, there are properties that I would deem as repetitive loss that are for whatever reason not on the list. So we have communicated with a number of homeowners and are adding folks to the list whether or not they technically qualify. What I'm needing from council this evening is direction to submit an application on behalf of the city. If we are awarded an application, there potentially will be an opportunity in the future that we would have to commit local dollars to make this buyout a reality. At the eighty-six properties we have listed, majority of them are repetitive loss and that ten percent match equates to roughly two-point-five million dollars of local funds. So I mean, this is not an inexpensive endeavor by any stretch of the imagination. The two and a half million will be reduced based upon insurance payouts. So if a homeowner, for instance, if our ten percent share equated to fifty thousand dollars and the homeowner had already received thirty-five from insurance, then the local share would be about fifteen, but it's still an impact to the city. At this stage, we're simply requesting council's permission to make an application to the state. They anticipate making a decision on that award late November, most likely January, knowing the way things go sometimes, before we know if we qualify or we're going to be awarded a grant. I didn't want to miss the opportunity, however, and to miss the deadline, so I wanted this discussion this evening.
Can I clarify?
Yes, sir.
Voting on to do this does not put us on the hook for any money. It just lets us have an option later.
Yes, sir. And I will note that due to this condensed timeframe, we have not had a chance to communicate with all eighty-six property owners. So there are a few of those that may or may not be interested in a buyout. The staff's intent is to get authorization from the state and assuming the council's in favor of it, if someone's not interested, bring in some, putting somebody else on the list that is interested.
Councilmember Rocky?
The three or four losses, is that over the lifetime of the home?
Yes, sir. And in prior events such as Tropical Storm Allison, the threshold for severe repetitive loss and repetitive loss was based on a period of time. With this current round of applications, there's not, it's not time-sensitive from that perspective.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous. Item fifteen, discussion and possible action regarding proposed inter-local agreements with various entities providing Friendswood with temporary emergency relief assistance with resources for water and sewer services.
Second.
We have motion, a second. Any discussion? We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, show to be unanimous. Resolutions. Consideration and possible action regarding the following. Resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris County submitting nominations to the Board of Directors for Galveston Central Appraisal District for 2018-19. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Resolution number 201721, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris Counties nominating a candidate for position of the Board of Directors of Harris County Appraisal District for 2018-19. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed. Resolution 201722, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris County endorsing the reappointment of three members and the appointment of one new member to the Galveston County United Board of Health. I'll make the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Okay. Ordinances. Ordinance number 201729, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing .18 acres located at 212 East Parkwood Avenue. Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from Community Shopping Center, CSC, to Community Shopping Center Specific Use Permit for Use 517 Telecommunications. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, show to be unanimous. Oh, 6-1, sorry. B. Ordinance 201730, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification for a tract or parcel containing 3.202 acres located at FM 518 Leisure Lane, also known as 1757 South Friendswood Drive out of Reserve E in the Howard subdivision to be recorded Friendswood, Texas by granting a zone classification change from Office Park District, OPD, to Community Shopping Center, CSC, as fully described herein. Murad, did we get the two conditions that I requested taken care of? The letter of credit and then the POA, Property Owners Association? We got those? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
I've got one point of clarification. Did the no curb cuts to Leisure Lane get put in there?
Yes, that's on the second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Show to be 5-2. C. Ordinance number 201732, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting the city of Friendswood, Texas, general budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018. Agenda item 17C. I move that the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-2018 be adopted as presented, including revenue projections and expenditure appropriations totaling $56,304,237. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show to be unanimous. 17C1. To ratify the property tax revenue reflected in the budget fiscal year 2017-18 as required by Local Government Code 102.07C. I move that we ratify the property tax revenue reflected in the budget for fiscal year 2017-18 as required by the Local Government Code, Section 102.007C.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Hill? I'm not going to support this because I do not think this is the right time for us to cut our taxes. This is not really a huge tax decrease, but, and it's basically possible because of the increased values we've had on our homes and businesses this year in new construction. But I think with the flood damage our city has suffered, it's almost going to negate those increases. And I also think that we're going to see in the coming years unforeseen expenses related to the flood. I know we're going to have to meet deductibles on equipment that was lost. We're talking about maybe having to come up with $2 million for buyouts, which, by the way, is the best flood control there is. But I, you know, I'm not anybody for high taxes, but I just think this is not the right time. And I think that next year, I'm not going to be here, but you guys may be forced with a sizable tax increase. I know it would require a couple of hearings. I just don't think it's a good time to cut taxes. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, show to be 6-1. Item D. Ordinance number 201733, first and final reading of an ordinance providing the levy and collection of ad valorem taxes of the city of Friendswood, Texas, for the tax year commencing October 1st, 2017, and ending September 30th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Hold on. I move that the city of Friendswood property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of the rate of .527349, which is approximately 3.4% less than the current tax rate. The proposed tax rate is composed of maintenance and operations rate of .432349 and a debt service rate of .0950.
Second.
I'll make the motion, you make the second. All those in favor? Oh, yeah, sure. Councilmember Rocky, discuss a little.
Thank you, sir. Two things. One is, and correct me if I'm wrong, we twice got corrections from the tax assessor collector on the expected rates because there were errors. Is that correct?
The first, first we're told we didn't get the value correction from GCAD that came through the assessor collector's office. The second was a calculation error.
I just want to say that those two errors contribute to us having a little confusion on what our rate is going to be. The second thing is, I wanted to ask, we had an item that we, I thought it was in last year's budget, fixing the restrooms out here at the pool. Apparently, that didn't make it. I'd like to ask that we could consider in some fashion that that's on a tentative list, I guess, this year. I know we got a lot of expenses, and we got a lot of things related to the flood, and we don't know how our fund balances and all that are going to be. But if we get to the point where that money's available, I'd like to see us have a discussion and see if we can't put that project back in.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show to be 6-1. We are adjourned.